Hi Bill. Is somebody else on the call?
Kim, tell me if you have anyone on the call.
All right, I'm going to call. I'm going to call that each other in here. Is Mark on the phone? Keith Banks? Mary Ann Martin. Martin Perez. Dudley Rivers. Bill Tan with the same. Okay, thank you. Sandy, we're ready to start.
Great. I'd like to call the meeting to order then. For the statutory process, we need to state this in the plan of the Open Public Meetings Act.
Good morning. Pursuant to public law nineteen seventy-five, Chapter two thirty-one, the Open Public Meetings Act, public notice of the special meetings filed on July twentieth, two thousand and eighteen, to the Office of the Secretary of the State of New Jersey and three newspapers, The Cherry-Holker, Post, and the Roma Commerz News for News, and Newark's Star-Ledger. Public notice of the meeting was posted in the following university libraries: the Alexander Library in Runway, the Daniel Library in Newark, and the Robinson Library in Camden. In addition, notice of this meeting has been posted on the Rock's website under Governing Boards. Did I just hear someone come on the call?
Bill, please.
Hi Bill. Anybody else there?
Mark.
Hi Mark. Welcome. You've all seen the meeting agenda and material posted on the Governing Board portal. Does anyone have a conflict of interest with this clause? Okay, thank you Sandy. Please continue.
Thank you, Sandy. We have proposed a resolution with the agreement planned to facilitate the repair and sort of government effect. Moving into table WJ Marvis. I would like to call on Dr. Brian Strong. He's regular in biomedical health sciences, Canada, or he's second by President of Health Affairs for a brief occasion.
And can I just ask those of you on the phones, please put your phones on you. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Five years ago, the state of New Jersey witnessed a historic reorganization of higher education with the establishment of Rutgers Biomedical and Health Sciences. New Jersey made the decision that we should no longer be overshadowed by older, better endowed and established academic health centers, particularly those in New York and Philadelphia. Our leaders believed Rutgers could build a model academic health center for the twenty-first century. This was the first step in developing what we intend to be a major academic and biomedical research powerhouse, coupled with a state-of-the-art healthcare delivery system. That door was opened for us five years ago, and today with the endorsement of the Board of Governors, we walk through it. This affiliation between Rutgers and Robert Johnson Barnabas Health and the unprecedented investment of Grins will benefit our patients, students, and the residents of New Jersey on day one, and has the promise to benefit future generations in ways we cannot yet imagine. I'm very proud to present to you this morning the major highlights of this plan to fulfill the promise of a world-class academic health system for New Jersey. A year ago, RBHS and Robert Johnson Barnabas Health entered into a letter of intent. Our shared objective is to collaborate to form a world-class academic health center that functions as one system. Our mutual goals were to develop a world-class academic health system, to improve leading academic research and clinical faculty, to consolidate clinical services under RWJBH leadership, while respecting traditional academic reporting structures, to dedicate collective resources to education, research, and health improvement to benefit the patients, students, and all of New Jersey. The highlights of this agreement are, first, to transform academic health care in New Jersey. It will begin with an initial investment of one hundred million dollars, functioning as endowment, ten million of which is set aside to retain our top students to remain within the RWJBH Rutgers entity post-residency. In addition, there'll be fifty million in years fixed mission support, with variable mission support based on the RWJBH financial success. This will lead to recruitment of approximately one hundred new faculty investigators over ten years, which will in turn double the RBHS research portfolio. A little bit more detail, this agreement is a twenty-year renewable term. RWJBH, RBHS, and Rutgers Health Group remain separate institutions with our own employees and separate finances. This maintains UH as the principal teaching hospital for the Newark Bay schools. RWJBH designates three to four seats for Rutgers, cunning's governing board, records the appointment appointment of one RWJBH appointee to the Board of Governors. Obviously, this is governed by New Jersey statute and is subject to the normal oversight accordingly. The Joint Committee will facilitate aligned strategic planning and coordinate the oversight of the academic health system. This will have equal representation, RBHS Chancellor, RWJBH CEO, and up to three additional representatives from each side. It will advise on major business, strategic, and operational decisions. The management structure includes mutual consultation on the appointment of someday my successor and the successor for RWJBH president. RBHS will lead the academic enterprise, including all research and education. RWJBH will lead the clinical enterprise. Via professional services and staff support agreement, the professional services and staff support will be purchased from Rutgers via these agreements. Key things about faculty and staff relationships: Rutgers faculty remain Rutgers faculty, Rutgers retains control of faculty appointments, Rutgers staff remain Rutgers staff, there's no transfer of employees to RWJBH, and it also maintains the traditional academic reporting structure, where Rutgers faculty report to department chairs, department chairs report to school deans, and deans report to the chancellor. Turning to each mission, for undergraduate medical education, RWJBH will be the exclusive UMA clinical, UNE, that is undergraduate medical education, clinical affiliate, with exceptions including, of course, University Hospital, VA, or elsewhere where we need to see capacity. RWJBH may continue UNB relationships with other schools over transitional period, subject to reasonable approval by the chancellor. In terms of graduate medical education, which is interns, residents, and fellows, RBHS will be the sole sponsoring institution of all GME programs to optimize the size, composition, and number of residency and fellowship programs across the state. Some residents will continue to be employed by Rutgers and others by RWJBH, as they are today. RWJBH will continue to fund GME at existing funding levels with an agreed upon inflation factor. In terms of other health professions, there will be, that is, other than medical schools, will be an aligned strategic planning for the other health professional programs, and this includes preferences, mutual preferences, but not strict exclusivity at RWJBH facility. The Health Education Executive Council will be afforded to coordinate education, including GME allocation decisions. It'll include equal representation by both entities, and in addition, the RBHS Senior Vice Chancellor of Academic Affairs will also serve as RWJBH. Chief Academic Officer will serve as a Chair with vote. From a research point of view, this will provide targeted funding for the recruitment of approximately one hundred new high caliber principal investigators over ten years, and of course, the staff and facilities that go with it. Streamlined diabetes removal processes, a full academic health center, and expansion of clinical trials statewide. From a clinical enterprise point of view, the goal is to develop a financially sustainable, aligned clinical enterprise within the academic health system that's fully supportive of the education and research mission. It will comprise both RBHS and RWJBH practices. It will be led by an integrated practice CEO, who will be an RWJBH employee reporting directly to the RWJBH CEO and indirectly to me. The Senior Vice Chancellor of Clinical Affairs, deans, SATCs, that is Senior Associate Deans for Clinical Affairs, and/or Chairs at Rutgers, will be accountable to the Integrated Practice CEO for management of the clinical practices. The net result of the clinical enterprise is that RWJ Barnabas Health and Rutgers, together offer vast location of clinical providers in seventeen of New Jersey's twenty-one counties. In terms of the roles of the Chairs, department chairs at Rutgers will continually make hiring, firing, and evaluation decisions. The faculty will continue to report to the Chairs. The Chairs, after consultation with the Integrated Practice CEO, will determine individual faculty of clinical FTE levels under the professional service agreement. The Chairs will be service chiefs at RWJ University Hospital, and coordination is expected with graduate performance metrics. In terms of recruitment and faculty, RWJBH physicians involved in educational activities who may apply for university appointments will be and are eligible to receive appropriate faculty appointments. RWJBH will continue to hire and employ clinicians, Rutgers will continue to hire and employ faculty, especially those who perform research. RWJBH will purchase the services of Rutgers faculty. The payment rate will be based on their current compensation and relative value changes or modified methodology for non-RW-based methodologies. So Rutgers faculty remain Rutgers faculty, they will be a contract between RWJBH and Rutgers to purchase the clinical time of our faculty based on a productivity measure. Importantly, that metric markedly also increases access to medical care for the public, because the payment for clinical care is not based on collections, but is based on reviews. Payments to Rutgers will increase as productivity increases or decrease if productivity decreases. There'll be reimbursement as well for all other expenses, including non-faculty clinical staff, malpractice, space, equipment, and so on. RWJBH will have exclusive, non-transferable right to use the names Rutgers Health, Rutgers Health Network, and Rutgers Health Group. There'll be the development of a logo and marketing use guidelines and protocols. Rutgers has termination rights to the extent necessary to protect its trademark rights. Payment for access to the brand are included within the mission support that I described. If the mission support for any airdrops below twenty-five million, access to the brand ends. RWJBH will own and fund the construction of a new clinical and research building for the Cancer Center, for CINJ, with the research space that is backed to Rutgers at Fair Market Value. RWJBH will also build a new ambulatory care building in New Brunswick for the new integrated practice. Rutgers will be responsible for the renovation or construction of new research and/or education buildings. So I conclude with this virtuous cycle, and this is not my creation, but comes from the University of Pittsburgh. You can start anywhere in this cycle you want, but it can start in the upper right, with finance, improving the correct financial position of the academic health system, making part of the investments in academics. Bottom right, I could increase research productivity of the footprint, strengthening teaching programs, investing in people and technologies. Bottom left, improving the stature regionally and nationally as an academic medical center with a halo effect on the university, increasing the value of the brand, competing more effectively. The top left, recruiting and retaining the best faculty, offering the highest quality and specialized service lens in the regional market. This is the cycle we have been on for the last forty years, with this fantastic partnership that we're having with RWJBH, the plan is for us to be able to go around this cycle much faster and much more successfully in the future. Thank you.
Next, we have several individuals who have asked to speak on the proposed resolution. The first one is Thomas Murphy from Security Medical School, Surgery Research.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. I think we might also be ordered to the past two minutes. I am a member and co-president of HPA Local 5094, deployed as a research teaching specialist at New Jersey Medical School. I want to express my concerns regarding today's resolution. First and foremost, the announcement came on July twenty-seventh, and the unions to this date have no more information than we had back July twenty-seventh. Our information requests have gone unanswered, our concerns unaddressed, and our, what do you call it, request to have the copies of the agreements before today's, actually by the Board of Governors, went unanswered. Some of the concerns we have obviously concern the impact that the Graduate Medical Education Consortium on One University Hospital. Will they suffer any financial losses in the long run? Will they be able to maintain their comprehensive community health services as stipulated in the Newark agreements of nineteen sixty-eight? The second concern is that the letter of intent uses deceptively unclear language as to how the faculty, physician practices, and healthcare providers will align so that conceptually they function in one as to execute a single set of strategies. Alignment is conveyed in language in a way that it will occur between state employees and private nonprofit employees seamlessly, when in fact, there is a very real possibility of elimination of public sector jobs through attrition that will then be filled by Robert Johnson Barnabas Health. The third concern is that the whole process of negotiating spin in the agreements, as well as the LOI is always made public, was done under a cloak of darkness behind closed doors with the hopes that no one would take notice. We have taken notice. It is unfair to everyone, especially taxpayers and your public workers, and that there is no input from employee unions with the medical faculty, residents, patients, or the community. Rutgers greatest strengths, this is factories, staff, and students. I'm almost finished. I urge, we need and deserve complete transparency, we need our questions answered, our concerns addressed, and copies of all signed agreements between Rutgers, Rutgers Health Group, and Robert Johnson Barnabas Health System. I urge the Board to table today's vote until this is done. Thank you.
That meeting, Warren, the Executive Director of the Air Association of the University, Professor AUP, Jay.
Good morning. My name is Theo Zetorres. I represent the AUP, the faculty that teach at the medical schools in RBHS. We have tremendous concerns about the impact of this affiliation agreement, and I, first of all, I just can't get over how secretive this has been the last ten months or eleven months. We had to, you know, insist by talking to legislators to even get meetings with, you know, university and other officials, just to get key questions answered about this, and even then, we're still at a loss of information. I can't understand, with this Apollo comment session, and I'm speaking on a topic now, a master coalition agreement, I don't even have a copy of the agreement. How can, how can something that has a twenty-year, you know, impact for twenty years on the students, the patients, the faculty, and the taxpayers of New Jersey ultimately not be able to have a public scrutiny before the final vote happens? It's just unbelievable that this is ordinary business at Rutgers and the state of New Jersey. This agreement has, you know, we have been asking for key labor protections to make sure our people aren't just arbitrarily moved or asked to move to a certain facility in a drop of a hat. None of that stuff, there's no written agreement, there's no actual, you know, written protections for our folks, there's been no involvement from faculty and staff and the key negotiations in this joint committee. And then conflicts of interest, putting people on each other's board of directors, having master startup packages where you have to mutually, both sides have to mutually agree to the hire. How does the university retain independence in this? How will you commit yourself to a business relationship for twenty years with healthcare being unpredictable? We were just one vote away from Obamacare going away, what, a year or two ago in the Senate, yet we're going to have to launch into a twenty-year agreement on healthcare in such an unpredictable environment? It's just, it's such a rush to judgment. It's such a rush to judgment, and I urge those reasonable members of this Board to just examine all the questions before you ultimately vote on something. Thank you.
Next up is Elena Cortez, Business Director, Membership Representative, Health Professionals and Allied Employees, AUP, AFLPO.
I am a Rutgers grad. I have an undergraduate degree and a graduate degree from Rutgers. I represent the supervisors, the former UMDJ, now RBHS. I just want you to understand who these supervisors are. They are people who have worked their way up, who have been promoted from within, who value their health benefits, who value their pension, who value tuition remission for their children and for themselves, who want to make sure that they remain Rutgers employees. And I've heard different things from this community in the last year. I've heard in Dante that the administration's saying you're going to sell clinical services at wholesale prices. This has led my, the people that we represent, to wonder about the security of their jobs. We've been asking for information, we've been asking to talk, and Rutgers has failed to give us any information, or really have a meaningful dialogue. We saw today here that Rutgers employees will stay Rutgers employees, but what does that really mean? And for how long? We've been asking you to speak to us about this, to commit that Rutgers employees will stay Rutgers employees, and have the unions work with you to make this a success. We want Rutgers to grow, we want Rutgers to prosper, because if Rutgers prosper, our members prosper, and they do well. But you have said one thing one day and something else another day, and you have not had meaningful dialogue, and this is shameful. We ask you to sit down and talk to us, commit to signing the master agreement to the unions, with the unions, and work with us. We will help you make this a success. We ask you to table this today. Thank you.
Next up is Christine Bullock, Staff Representative of Health Professionals and Allied Employees.
I would first like to say thank you to the university for shaping me into the professional that I am today. You have contributed to my voice, you now contribute to my anger and disappointment. Health professionals have not been included in your discussions. As part of your alumni, I can tell you that I am more than qualified to have a discussion at the table. As an employee, I have faith in the members you have hired and to do the same. And as an HPA member, I am embraced in the knowledge that I can vote. Who will be impacted by your decisions? Not only the students, but us, the workers, the workers, the communities, everyone that we touch will be affected. We want to stay here. How, how, as a professional, you can kick us out the door, I will never be able to understand, but we will continue to fight, to fight to stay. You tell everyone that our members don't have to worry, and yet you have rejected any language at the bar at the table, and you have rejected a signing of a member and a member agreement. Why should we ever trust you? We are in the middle of negotiations right now, and I can tell you that no is not a negotiation. That is not fair for us and for anyone else. I'm embarrassed to be in the long line right now. Black.
I believe that President Warren would like to say a few words.
No, I think at this point I'll pass. I think that the comments that were made were adequately addressed by the last presentation. There's nothing there that I need to go through. Thank you.
Resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would ask some of you to be at our university secretary. Those of you who have dialed in and have not reached your telephones, please do so. We all hear lots of background noise, and it would be much better to have a computer or a pause to back off. Thank you very much. Whereas Rutgers State University of New Jersey for itself, and on behalf of the Rutgers Robert Johnson Medical School, and I'm going to refer to each of these entities by their initials as I read through this, so we can save time, New Jersey Medical School and other unincorporated school centers is within the Rutgers Biomedical and Health Science Organizational Unit, together with its controlled affiliate Rutgers Health Group Inc., to enter into an affiliation arrangement with RWJ Barnabas Health Inc., a New Jersey nonprofit corporation for itself on behalf of its constituent hospitals and affiliate. And whereas Rutgers and RWJBH will enter into several contractual arrangements to memorialize the affiliation, including a master affiliation agreement, a master professional services agreement, a master support services agreement, a space and equal equipment, I'm sorry, a space and equipment agreement, and a trademark license, that collectively set forth the terms by which RWJBH will pay Rutgers mission support to support the university's research and teaching missions. Through its employees, Rutgers will provide professional administrative services to RWJBH, and RWJBH will lease space and equipment to Rutgers at fair market value, and RWJBH will be committed to use Rutgers' help to serve other licensed trademarks. And whereas, the primary purposes of the affiliation are developing a world-class academic health system by recruiting leading academic research and clinical practitioners in their field of concentration, advancing health science innovation, developing centers of excellence across wide spectrums of clinical specialties, and the alignment and optimization of clinical services provided by the parties, enhancing the delivery and the accessibility to advance evidence-based healthcare, dedicating the parties' collective resources to educating health professionals, innovating and delivering patient care to improve health, investing in innovation across a wide spectrum of areas for clinical academic research strategy, committing to operating in a coordinated manner with meaningful and active participation across entities, and fully aligned strategic plans, and committing to health improvement through community and patient research and the prevention and treatment of disease. And whereas, the MAA provides with the establishment of a joint committee, equal recognition from the university and RWJBH, which will act in an advisory capacity for the parties to facilitate aligned strategic planning and coordinated oversight of all aspects of the affiliation set forth in the MAA and the supplemental agreement. And whereas, the MAA also outlines the significance of the parties' maintenance representation of the parties' respective governing boards and committees as permitted by law. And whereas, federal healthcare regulation, if not even certain entities that deliver healthcare, that enter into qualified binding relationships, can collectively deem an academic medical center as qualifying as an AMC, the benefits of Rutgers and RWJBH. And whereas, one of the requirements to qualify as an AMC under the federal healthcare regulation is for the governing bodies of each component in the AMC to adopt and approve the written agreements between the components of the AMC, such as the MAA and the supplemental agreement. And whereas, university administration reviews all the terms of the affiliation, excluding key provisions of the MAA and supplemental agreement as they were being negotiated. The Committee on Health Affairs of the Board of Governors on September seventh and November ninth, two thousand and seventeen, and February five, March fifteenth, and May seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen, the Committee on Financing Facilities on May thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen, and will be Rutgers Board of Governors attending the committee on April twenty-four, twenty-sixth, and July twelve. And whereas, university administration also reviews the proposed affiliation and key provisions of the MAA supplemental agreement with the full Board of Governors on July eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen, and July twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen, and today, and the Rutgers Board of Governors now wishes to memorialize its approval of the affiliation with RWJBH, as well as approval for the university to finalize, enter into, and perform the MAA and the supplemental agreement in a manner consistent with the proposed terms. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Governors, Rutgers State University of New Jersey, common recommendation, the Committee on Financing Facilities, the Committee on Health Affairs, the Executive Committee of the Board of Governors, as follows. Section one, the four going beside them are hereby incorporated by references to this section one and as fully restated herein and hereby are ratified to confirm. Section two, the affiliation with RWJBH as discussed in the various Board Committee meetings and as to be deprived to memorialize in the MAA and supplemental agreement, hereby approved. Section three, university administration acting to the President of the university, Chancellor of Rutgers Biomedical and Health Sciences, and Executive Vice President for Health Affairs, and the Executive Vice President for Health Affairs. and the Executive Vice President for Financial Administration and University Treasurer, on behalf of Rutgers, with advice and consultation from the Senior Vice President and General Counsel, or his designated aide, are hereby authorized and directed to negotiate, finalize, and render into, execute, deliver, and perform under the cap of Rutgers as applicable to the MAA and the supplemental agreement. Section 4, the university administration acting to the President of the university, the Chancellor of Rutgers Biomedical and Health Services, and Executive Vice President of Health Affairs, Executive Vice President for Financial Administration and University Treasurer, and the Executive Vice President for Strategic Planning and Operations and Chief Operating Officer, on behalf of Rutgers, the Vice, and the Senior Vice President and General Counsel, or his designated aide, all are, and each of which is hereby authorized and directed to take any and all actions necessary or desirable of carrying out the purpose and intent of this resolution, to effectuate the transaction contemplated hereby. The actions herefore taken by the aforementioned officers or their staff in full further of the affiliation with RWJPH and intent of this resolution are hereby ratified and confirmed. University as the sole member of RHT, hereby authorized as RHT, enter into the MAA supplemental agreement and take some other actions, as may be required, and perform its obligations hereunto. This resolution, upon approval, shall take effect immediately on behalf of Rutgers State University of New Jersey Board of Governors on this day, July 24 2018. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All is clear.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion, carry.
Point of order. Can we hear, can we hear the votes of the individuals?
I'm sorry, is your phone on order? Please sit down.
We don't even know who's on the phone. Can you please, can you please tell us?
Let's hear the votes. Say your votes. Say your name.
I have the list here, I want to know who's voting. Please, be transparent.
Start now. Start now.
Who is on the phone?
Coward.
Well, we even admit to voting, yes.
President Ford is the only member of the Board of Governors who's here today. That is shameful.
And even he would say that.
You want the resolution?
Yeah.